Until this year, our early childhood educators had maintained a separate seniority list. And that was because until recent legislation mandated that all early childhood educators fall under the Education Minnesota, well, in our case, Education Minnesota-Fairmont Master Agreement that covers all of our teaching positions. So we made that adjustment in the process, even ahead of the contract being ratified, to bring all those teachers onto one seniority list, as many of them are licensed appropriately. And if their licensure is isolated to early childhood only, that still is taken into account in the event we need the seniority list for any staffing adjustments. So that's one difference, where in the past they had been on a separate list and now they're all combined.
All right, thank you very much. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Thank you, motion carries. A school board meeting schedule? I can take that one. We are going to cancel the November 25th school board meeting, and the next meeting will be December 9th. So I make a motion for that change.
Second?
Motion by myself, second by Dan. Any discussion? One thing to note, the reason tonight's meeting is on Monday instead of Tuesday is we've been recently informed that we are not supposed to have school board meetings on Veterans Day. So, thank you, everyone, for being here tonight on a different evening. We have a motion, a second, to cancel the November 25th school board meeting. Any discussion? Other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. MSBA conference.
I can do that.
Thank you.
I will make a motion to approve the overnight attendance of the school board members at the Minnesota MSBA Leadership Conference, January 15th and 16th of 2026.
I'll second it.
Thank you, motion by Jen, second by Mari. Any discussion?
I'm looking forward to the conference again. It's just a good learning opportunity to meet new other, new and other school board members from other school districts and see what they're doing, and lots of good education opportunities, and get to try some good food, too.
Thank you, Jen. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carries. Policy revisions, Appendix F, Item G. Shayna?
Yes, at the October 29th policy meeting, our committee, the committee members recommended a full board approval for revision, revisions made to policy number 613 for graduation requirements. I make a motion to go ahead and approve the revised policy of number 613 graduation requirements.
Thank you, we have a motion by second, or by Shayna. Mari is the second. Any discussion? We did look over this many times. There were some language changes suggested by the School Board Association, and there were some state law changes, and so we sent it to our principals, we sent it to our principal of curriculum instruction as well, to make sure that we are in compliance with those new changes and policies. And if you look at the policy changes, it's, it's nothing, there's no major shifts, we just felt it was necessary to bring it to the full board for approval, because there are so many of the little updates in there. So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Thank you, motion carries. Personnel, retirement, item A.
Yes, we have the retirement of Jerry Brooks, high school math teacher, effective June 10th, 2025, and I make a motion to approve of the retirement of Jerry Brooks, effective on that date.
I'll second it.
Thank you, we have a motion by Dan, second by Mari. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Thank you, motion carries. Employment, item B.
I will make a motion to approve Jerry Brooks, high school math teacher, memorandum for returning as a retired teacher for the 2025-2026 school year. Principal Bruski and Schultz have recommended that Jerry Brooks be hired as a retired math teacher for the 2025-2026 school year per the terms outlined in the MOU. Appendix G.
Thank you, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Jen, second by Mari. Any discussion?
Should we add winter coaches into that one?
I was gonna do it separate, because it was an MOU. If that's okay.
Yep.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Thank you, motion carries. And moving on to winter coaches, Appendix H.
So we have the winter coaches, recommended coaches for 2025-2026 winter athletic, enclosed in Appendix H. I'll make a motion to approve the winter coaches for the 25-26 school year.
Second?
Thank you, we have a motion by Jen, second by Dan. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Thank you, motion carries. All right, moving on to contract settlements. Appendix I, we have, I'll do that for Mike, we have the employee contract settlement for our business manager. It's a three-year contract, effective the, from the school year of 2025-26 through the school year of 2027-2028. I make a motion to approve it.
I'll second it.
Thank you, we have a motion by myself, second by Mari. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Thank you, motion carries. All right, we are done with our business, our personnel business for the meeting, and we get to move on to the fun part of tonight's meeting, which is our community and celebrations for our school. And we'll do, first of all, the American Education Proclamation from Superintendent Treido, and then we'll move on to our high school musical.
Yeah, we switched things up a little bit tonight, so this is different, but thank you, Nicole. As we do every year, we acknowledge American Education Week, so I will proceed with reading that proclamation. Whereas, American Education Week is an opportunity to recognize the accomplishments and the needs of our local public schools, and whereas, our public schools have enabled generations of American families to build upon the lessons of the past to achieve the dreams of tomorrow. And whereas, American system of public education relies not only on the skills and dedication of teachers, school administrators, and educational support staff, but also on the encouragement and support of the entire community. Whereas, teachers in the Fairmont area are joining teachers, students, and educational organizations around the nation in activities in honor of American Education Week. Now therefore, I, Andy Treido, Superintendent of Fairmont Area Schools, along with the employees of Fairmont Area Schools, am asking parents, students, and civic leaders to join in the nation's annual salute to public education during the week of November 17th through the 21st, 2025, and do hereby proclaim this week to be American Education Week in Fairmont, Minnesota.
Thank you. All right, we will now move on to our musical. I'll let you introduce yourselves and what you're presenting.
Hello, thank you for having us. My name is Sarah Goodall, I am one of the directors of our show, accompanied by some of my team members sitting over there. And we are excited to be back to talk about the Fall Musical. I invited, we have about 13 students who have prominent speaking roles in this particular show. I invited all 13, these are the ones who are able to make it tonight. So in a few minutes, I'll let them step up and just talk a little bit about themselves and their contributions to the show. I'll just give you kind of an overview. This year, we are doing Mamma Mia. It's a crowd favorite. We have a number of these, of the seniors, who I think since they were in seventh grade have been dropping subtle and not at all subtle hints that this was a show that they desperately wanted to do. And it has a pretty unique casting requirement. We really needed to have more mature male voices ready for the way that that show is written. And so traditionally, I would say, from a gender point of view, we haven't had a lot of males in our program, and we've been growing that dynamic and demographic as the last few years have gone on. And this year, I am really excited to say that we, well, first of all, we have 139 students in the show.
Wow.
And 46 of them are guys, that's the biggest number we've ever had. So delighted, and also, it was just clear that this was going to be the year. And so I'm excited for our seniors and our juniors, who've been asking and asking and asking for this one, to be able to do it with them. Speaking of numbers, 35 of those students are seniors. That's a huge number. I'm gonna be emotional a little bit. Some of them have been with us for a really, really long time, and obviously, those bonds are gonna be hard to let go of. But there's a bunch of those seniors who are brand-new, and just decided this year that they were gonna try it, so that's always exciting to see. On the other end, we have 16 7th graders. That's also the biggest number of 7th graders we've ever had come out for a show, and everybody else falls somewhere in between. We opened it up to some staff members to participate in the school performances of it, and I had about 11 staff members say, heck yeah, that's my favorite musical, I'll be right down to learn Dancing Queen. And so we've been training some of our staff members in choreography, we'll see how many of them stick it out, because they're learning that it's a lot more challenging than even they thought it was going to be. And then speaking of challenging, this show has 25 musical numbers. I counted them before we started, because I thought, if I say that number and I'm wrong, I'll feel silly, but 25, that's unprecedented for our program. And if you can imagine how difficult it is to learn one song's choreography, and then some of these folks up here are in all of those numbers. So it's been a big ask, and a big ask especially for my team, who, I'm the stage direction, but choreography and vocal work is part of what my teammates do. And so it's been a great year of us all getting to grow in different ways, and I'm so excited for you to come out and see it. I want to also mention, we added a performance this year. Typically, we would have a Thursday, Friday, Saturday show. In the past, when our football team makes it through to a certain level of the playoffs, we have to push that Saturday to the Sunday, because we have a football game. This year, that didn't happen, so we moved it back to Saturday night, and I started to get an outpouring of phone calls from community members, saying, we really like the matinee, it's better for our younger kids, and what can we do, what can we do? So after a few phone calls, we, I can, we had a license for it, and so I went ahead and added a Saturday matinee, which we've never done. So the, that's exciting. That gives another opportunity for our community to come out and see it, if the daytime works better than the nighttime. We also are partnering for the first time this year with Culligan and Alexis Cakes to offer specialty cookies and water at intermission. That proceeds will benefit the theater program, we're really excited about that, too. So lots of new and exciting things happening. And now I will stop talking. Well, first, I'll ask you if you have any questions, and then I can turn it over to my favorite people here.
What was the first day of, so auditions were when to lead us to this point?
Thank you. We started in September, and the first read-through was September 15th. I had an opportunity, actually, just today, for another report to total up our hours, so I have that in front of me. I think it might be nice for everyone to know the kind of commitment. These kids are in sports, they are top-notch students, they do a lot of things. They have had 88 hours of rehearsal time, and a total of 147 hours of additional work. That's choreography, set building, paint, all the things that go into making a show. That's so much of a commitment. But we work around everybody's schedule, they come when they can, some nights we'll have this group, some nights we'll have that group, and it's been very successful, and I think that's part of why we've gotten so many kids involved, is we try to keep that door as wide open as we can make it. And we, our shows this year, we'll have a free senior citizen matinee on Wednesday, two days from now, 12, at 12:30 in the PAC, and then Thursday night is opening night at 7:00, Friday night at 7:00, Saturday will be at 1 o'clock and at 7:00. So, all right, friends, are you ready? I think, maybe step up, say your name, what you like about this particular show, how long you've been doing theater, if you're new, or if you've been a long-timer, I think it's nice to show the variety of your experience.
My name is Anthony, I play Bill in the show. I've been doing theater for about four years now, and I just love that it's an opportunity for us to all get on the stage and have a, have a voice, have some presence, and I just like how it brings us all together for a common goal.
Hello, I'm Belle Luterman, I'm playing Donna in Mamma Mia, and this is my second year in theater. I did it in ninth grade, had a bunch of fun, but took a step back to do some other things, and I came back for my senior year. And I really appreciate that our community is for everyone, whether you're a 7th or 12th grader, it's the one thing you do, or it's the 100th thing you do, it's, it's for you, and it's a place where you can come and share your voice.
Hi, my name is Maddie Pyman, I play Tanya. I've been doing theater for a little while, I started off by playing the drums in the pit, and then kinda transferred into being a part of it now. And I just really like how it gives everyone who's so different, the same goal and a way to express themselves, even though everyone's so different and have their own things, it gives everyone a common goal.
Hello, I'm Leon Yang, I'm a junior, and this is my first year in the musical. And I was convinced to join, because, like, originally, what stopped me was a lot of, like, school commitments and activity commitments, but then I was like, oh, well, so I joined. And then, yeah, I've had a lot of fun. Musical gives me an opportunity to hang out with my friends, and like Anthony said, just come together with a group of people that are really great, really kind, and really passionate about what we're doing. Yeah.
My name's Cooper Goodall, I'm a senior, this is gonna be my fourth musical at Fairmont. And my favorite part of the program is just how much it can bring a group of people together, and, you know, no matter who you are, where you come from, or what you do, you can go on a stage and show everyone how talented you are, and how amazing that everyone at Fairmont has the potential to be. And I think it's a really wonderful opportunity to, like, build a family, if you don't have one, or even just extend our relationships you've already formed in high school.
My name is Ally Stright, and this is my fifth musical, Fall Musical, I've been in since 7th grade, I play Rosie this year. My favorite thing about musical is, it gives everyone that voice. Everyone's activities and interests are important, and being able to build on that and finding that family is so important, so, yeah.
Thank you, I think you all did an amazing job articulating your interests, and I, every year, we say this, but it's so fascinating, because as I look at all of you, you know, Belle's up here as a student school board member of your group, you have, all of you compete at high levels in what you do, whether it's speech, debate, cross-country, powerlifting, tennis, football, volleyball, you know, solo ensemble combat, I mean, it puts it all together, and those of you as advisors, too, do other things, too, whether it's senior class advisor, or running a choral program, or coaching our dance team, or like, from the kids to the adults, like, all the skills come together, and it's just such a unique spectacle in a very positive way of how all the dots connect for our school district. And I can't think of another activity that does that, like our musical. There are others that come close, but this one's just so unique, and you look at so many kids from different levels of interest, and how they've grown, it's just, it's phenomenal. And I continue to learn more and more every year. I was not someone who was in theater, but I keep asking questions and learn things like the importance of throat coat tee this year, and we went through a couple boxes at our house, and, but, all the things that, but there are so many things behind the scenes and the hours, that's why I asked the question, because the hours are just phenomenal, and what the kids do with your guidance as adults. So I know if people are watching either now or the recording, Courtney and Molly are just two of your team, so I guess I would ask you if you could highlight the adult team.
I'd love to do that.
Because you have a couple changes, or at least one change there, too, this year.
Yeah, we have, we have, I have the best team of people, I say that all the time. Courtney Wolf is our choreographer, Molly Blis is our vocals this year, she's helping do a lot of our pit direction, while Katie Hoedland, who is our pit director, is on maternity leave. Our sound technician is John Barcher, we have a build team of Mary Schmidt, Jay Schmidt, and Tamara Schmidt, who all work together to help put our set into this amazing, wait till you see it, you guys, like, it's massive. If you, you're going to Greece, if you're coming, you're going to the island, it's just gorgeous. And I just have to say, I love that you mentioned throat coat, I had to run up here. Here's a little sneak thing that you can learn, if you watch this, and you'll know something when you come to the show that no one else will know. Throat coat is by far the number-one thing we do for our kids vocally, when it's hard to sing 25 songs and do it over and over and over again. Your voice gets raw, it gets sore, it gets tender. So there's a mailbox on the set, where Sophie, the character, is going to mail the letters to her potential fathers, and she, we filled it with throat coat, throat drops, so the kids kinda know where it is. So if you see any kids wandering by in the middle of the show and checking the mail, they're really just taking care of themselves vocally, and you'll know that little side thing that no one else knows if you come to the show, so, thank you so much always for having us and supporting what we do. I'm really proud, every year, I get emotional about it. I may, I may have to shout out one of our ensembles, too. This year, with so many kids, we've taken groups and put them together and said, okay, this team of people, these are your four songs, you're gonna learn them. Okay, this team of people, these are your three songs, you're gonna learn them. And we scaffolded it according to both what the kids indicated that they were able to commit to, we always ask that in their application, it's not really an application, but kind of an audition form, just so we can know what kind of a commitment level they're at. So we've grouped them all up, and we have an ensemble this year of some gentlemen who have really committed, like, committed in a way that I've maybe never seen before. So when I say you're going to be entertained, this is worth every second of your time. Please come.
Can we have just a hint, maybe, of who some of the faculty members are that are going to be doing the dancing?
Do we dare shout them out? Well, this-
Just drop some hints, or just say, you know, their name rhymes with, or something.
Well, I'm sure, our lone male is Abram Sapulvita, who I want you to know, has got the moves. He is pretty amazing. But Kristen Teji's been coming, Angie Simmering, Candace Ammonson, oh my, I'm gonna be on the spot, so I'm gonna suddenly get flustered and not remember them all. Liz Lowry has been coming. We have, to accommodate our adult schedules, too, we've been meeting with them at random haphazard 20-minute intervals for the last 10 days. Who's got time at 7:35 in the PAC? Who's got time at 5:50? I actually have a group coming at 6:10, so, like, they come when they can, too, and it's gonna be fun, I think, for the students on Friday to see their teachers step out and do a little disco.
Great.
I feel like there's gonna be a lot of sing-along in the audience.
Oh, I hope, we're hope, we're really hoping for that. This is the show for it, for sure. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And before we all leave, I also want to congratulate Cooper on doing a great job in representing Fairmont at the State Cross-Country Meet. Excellent job.
All right, we will have our superintendent's report and calendar.
Thanks, Nicole. As you see the copy in front of you, our enrollment, since our last school board meeting, has remained relatively consistent since the start of the school year, as we settle in now into the month of November. Buildings and grounds, just a few updates there. We continue, if you've driven around school grounds, a continuation of the removal and replanting of trees. With that, three of our new trees, with the unexpected passing of our former custodian and longtime contributor to Fairmont activities, Tom Seifer, three of those trees are in honor of Tom, and in all the, all the time, energy, and effort that he's put into the school district, definitely will be missed, and just in honorarium, that we'll have a few remembrances with those trees for Tom in his honor. Also, in the last few weeks, we have installed signage, finally, it's long overdue, at the school's hunt farm, acknowledging the partnership with New A-K-H Cooperative in our local FFA program. The new bleacher section will be installed, actually, you just learned today, this Friday, under the concession stand, will be five rows of new bleachers to use during class time for instruction in that space, as well as for our students to use that as a new student section during the game, so they can stand if they want, they don't have to worry about spectators behind them being able to observe the game. Scoreboards were installed at Fairmont Elementary and the high school football practice fields, those were thanks to donations by the Fairmont Youth Football Association. All of our irrigation systems have been winterized, and we're updating some parking lot signage as well. The, I'm gonna move on, I'll come back to number three, the National Community Education Day. In addition to American Education Week, I want to recognize that National Community Education Day 25 will be celebrated in three days here, on November 13th. The day is meant to celebrate the importance of lifelong learning and recognize the programs and people involved in community education, which includes initiatives like early childhood programs, adult literacy classes, and enrichment opportunities for all ages. Today, we just want to take a moment to recognize our local CER program, and those involved there, and celebrate all the community members, educators, and programs that support lifelong learning. So thank you to our CER program. Contract renewals and negotiations planning, we continue to work with our principals and teachers and community outreach coordinator and liaison on that. A unique honor that we've earned is, our Unified Cardinals program has earned the recognition of the ESPN Honor Roll. If you're not familiar, ESPN is the largest sports entertainment broadcasting network in the United States, so we're excited to share that, our junior, senior high school has been chosen to represent Minnesota on the 2025 ESPN Honor Roll. This Honor Roll is comprised of one national banner school per state, so a really big deal. It's a huge honor for our junior, senior high school team that they've been chosen, true testament to the passion, hard work, and dedication that all of our leaders have put into Unified Activities in our school district. So, more to come on that, but just such a really, really cool, unique recognition there. Lastly, I know we canvassed the results for the referendum, but just wanted to say, you know, as we reiterated in multiple reports, while the results are not what we had hoped for, we certainly respect the decision of our community and our voters, you know, and as a school system, we continue to evaluate the steps we need to take every day to meet our, our facilities, as well as our educational needs to support our students and staff. So moving forward, we're gonna continue to be committed to upholding our mission of being a leading and innovative school district, preparing our kids to thrive today and excel tomorrow. While doing that, we recognize the result is maybe a setback with some of the goals that we had, but we'll continue to work diligently to engage our communities in building a bright future for our school district, the Fairmont area, and most importantly, our youth and our students. So many times, growth always takes investment, and we'll use this as a learning opportunity to seek new and creative ways to continue to improve the great school district that we have. And just again, thank you to everyone that voted and that was involved in the process. And we, we also, in that process today, got to hear from some of our students and some of their reflections, too, so they had some insight there to help, help with some perspective that, in terms of things that we can continue to do to best serve them. So, thank you to everyone involved, and more will be coming in the near future in terms of what our course will be in the future, moving forward.
Thank you. Any questions for Superintendent Treido, or comments?
Well, just wanted to note that there are still going to be issues, no matter how we go about it, there's going to be problems with buildings or facilities that always crop up. I've been a big believer that we stay ahead of those things, and it helps us in the long run, not only to have the best facilities possible presently, but also to keep them that way, to keep them so that our buildings that we've had for a long, long time, the age of our buildings compared to some other places who've already had buildings kind of fall apart on them, you know, we, we have pretty old buildings, but we have an excellent maintenance staff, and I think we put the investment and the time into them. Having this election turn out the way it did doesn't make any of those issues go away, but it will change the way that we focus on how we're going to attack those problems. but it will change the way that we focus on how we're going to attack those problems, and, and continue to provide the best environment possible for, for everybody in this community, whether you have a whole big family of kids in school, or you're retired, or you live on the farm, or if you live in the fancy house by the lake, we're gonna keep trying to figure out what is the best way forward, and keep, keep Fairmont the best it can be.
Thank you, Dan. All right, we'll move on to, we don't have any board reports, but we do have our student board members, Belle and Emma, I'd like to turn some time over to them, to share some things they'd like to, to speak with us about.
Yes, so today, we had the opportunity to meet with certain school board members as student council, and Emma also joined us as a school board representative, and we were split into two separate meetings, a senior high for ninth through twelfth graders and junior high meeting. In the senior high meeting, we discussed things like the continuation of our flex spaces and maintenance of those, so students can keep independent learning opportunities, we talked about maybe other facility updates, obviously, post-referendum, things like some updates maybe in the girls locker room, as well as other things we wanna see around the building, and then we continued discussion of ways to utilize things like advisory time, it's helpful, we had Mr. Bruski also joined us in our meeting, so we were able to facilitate conversation with both the board and that principal perspective as well. And one thing we're really trying to implement this year, from the student council perspective, is we're working a lot, we have junior high class, or junior high student council officers as well, so it takes a lot of guts for a seventh grader to put their name in the ballot and say, I wanna be junior high student council president, and it's been really fun, from a senior, senior high officer perspective, to work with those younger students on how to facilitate meetings like those, so the senior high's been providing scaffolding for them, but also encouraging those students to take up those leadership roles, and learn ways to give positive feedback and collaborate with others.
Thank you. All right, I entertain a motion to adjourn?
So who?
Thank you, Dan, thank you, we have a motion to second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Thank you, motion carries, meeting adjourned.